Called to order a meeting for the Normal Town Council. I want to back that off a little bit. For the Normal Town Council for Monday, June 21st, 2021, please call the roll.
Mayor Kuss?
Here.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Here.
Mr. Nord?
Here.
Ms. Smith?
Here.
Ms. Cummings? Mr. Preston?
Here.
Mr. McCarthy?
Here. We'll begin with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under our own individual will be contested throughout.
We go into a public comment. We have three people wishing to speak on the agenda tonight. I should explain, Mr. Almer is here from our last regular meeting and we were having some significant technical difficulties on our Zoom meeting and we never could get him online to give his comments, so I told him he was more than welcome to make them tonight, so we're making that exception. So, Mr. Almer?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm appearing here to hopefully make some comments that will keep the underpass project as close as possible to the budget. Uptown One was well-designed with one exception, the failure to address vehicle and pedestrian access from the south. According to Mr. Peterson, three of the four parties, the Union Pacific Railroad, the ICC Rail Safety Division, and Amtrak knew that a grade crossing, the pedestrian grade crossing, could not remain with the new station as that had not been allowed in about three decades. Normal was the only player in the group of four that didn't know this, and I called the ICC Rail Safety Division head and talked to him, and he verified that information was correct. Somehow Normal never got the information. Number two, railroads are notoriously, do not share information unless directly asked or forced to provide information. Railroads are very difficult to work with. Don't assume the railroad will tell you anything that you don't ask. During the construction period, what is being done to minimize loss of sales to uptown merchants and minimize the reduction of passengers due to construction inconvenience and mess? Has this been addressed? Finally, have people been involved in the project that don't know much about it that ask the stupid questions? This council approved a $300,000 cost overrun in addition to the built-in standard cost overrun to cover the cost of the town's tunnels for utilities because the new utilities were designed seven feet too short, not aware that the track separation would increase by seven feet to the south. I own three properties south of the railroad adjacent to its property, and a year before those tunnels were built, I knew that the railroad was going to move the south track, seven feet further south. Worse, equally bad, UP's project engineers approved Normal's flawed design. So I leave with the question, who is responsible and accountable for this entire project? Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Doug Fensler, who wishes to speak on item I, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to adopt rules for outdoor seating and service.
Good afternoon, or evening, Council. Good to be back in the same building with all of you instead of watching and/or only participating remotely. I originally wanted to speak on Agenda Item A and was told that both Agenda Items A and B were not eligible for me to speak on. I don't know who made that decision for sure, but I was told to talk to Mr. Kuss and to ask to speak on I instead. I do hope you give that all your effort tonight and try to figure out whether that's the right thing to do. Now that I have some time, I would like to ask a question of Kevin, or at least pose a question, obviously don't need an answer right now, but last week, Ms. Cummings accused or at least mentioned the words when talking about Stan about libel and slander. Did you ask her for any documentation to back up her allegations? Ms. Smith accused or at least alleged sexism against Stan while talking last week. Did you ask her for any information to validate her allegations to try to substantiate that? I also would like to know, the agenda for last week's special meeting had very vague, at best, Agenda Item that before you spoke, Mayor Kuss, to actually let everyone know the details of what was going on or more enough about it so that everyone did know, how did the guy that sat here from Bologna, how did he know? How would he have possibly known? Someone had to tell him. How would that have happened? Who would that have been? People that had created this agenda would have told him. Just very not happy with the way things worked last week, period, but in the same sense, two allegations were made against Stan last week unsubstantiated. At least I don't know of anything to substantiate either of them, and I don't hear anyone crying for evidence against those accusations against him. Thank you.
Is that right? No. Our last speaker is Carl Seela, who wishes to speak on a resolution to accept a five-year proposal from M.E. Simpson Company for Large Meter Testing Services, and Item G, a resolution amending the base salary of the municipal manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, other members of the Inquisition. Before you try to continue with Normal's long history of trying to censor and limit public input, my comments are relevant to 5G and 8 on the agenda. My comments are mostly related again to last week's meeting. There was a lot of support expressed for Ms. Reese. If council members wish to support Ms. Reese, that is certainly quite appropriate. However, it was very clear that a secondary item on the unwritten agenda was a tax on Mr. Nord. We were told that this was not coordinated or scripted, yet as Mr. Fensler said, how did the public commenter know the agenda when it wasn't published? If people know if there's an agenda, it should be published. If there is an agenda, then why do friends of council members or mayor know it? In my experience, Stan has worked very hard to represent the taxpayers, policies that are good for the public at large. Some council members called him bullying, politically driven, and please just stop. If you consider things that are best for the taxpayers and the townspeople political and should be stopped, then I think that says more about the people who made the comments than about Mr. Nord. Mr. Nord has called for a real estate policy because a lot of the questionable items, not all under Ms. Reese's reign, have been real estate-related, and yet there has been no attempt to form an official real estate policy. We also have no ethics policy, which some would regard as a no ethics policy. Many people have said his accusations are unfounded. I would disagree. Given we have no ethics policy, they're unenforceable. If we had an actual policy, then perhaps a hearing could be made, and perhaps at that point you could determine them to be unfounded, but lacking a legal definition, you go by common definition in everyday parlance, and that many people here have acted unethically. I personally have witnessed at least one person in front of me blatantly lie and even break the law in this very room. There was some discussion of the citizen summit. I was there. I consider that unethical. It wasn't so much seeking public input as please tell us how we're wonderful and please tell us your best reasons for why we should continue doing what we want to do regardless of public input. Is that illegal? Not at all. Is that legally unethical? Not at all. Is it unethical in just kind of a vague general parlance? I would say so. I don't know that you were behind that.
You're over your three minutes, Mr. Seela. Could you wrap it up?
Thank you so much. Basically, the council is trying to tell other council members not to get input from the public. Council members should be representing the public and involved with them as much as possible.
That concludes our public comment. We move to the omnibus Agenda Items Considered Routine, and we'd be handled with one vote unless a council member would like to pull an item for discussion. Mr. Nord?
I'm surprised I'm the only one pulling stuff, but I'd like to pull Item B, C, D.
I'm sorry, I didn't get the second one.
B is in Boy, C is in Charles, D is in David, F is in Frank, G is in George, I is
Motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Items considered on the omnibus tonight are approval of the minutes of the special council meeting of June 7th, 2021, approval of the minutes of the regular council meeting of June 7th, 2021, a resolution to accept a five-year proposal for M.E. Simpson Company for Large Meter Testing Services, and it brings us to, oh, please call the roll. Oh, H. Didn't cross that out. An ordinance amending, ordinance number 5838 concerning an easement vacation for the re-subdivision of Lot 2 in the first addition to Eagles Landing Commercial Subdivision at 1290 Healingstone. Please call the roll.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Aye.
Mr. Nord?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mayor Kuss?
Aye.
Those items are approved. Item B is a report to receive and file town normal expenditures for payment as of June 16th, 2021. Mr. Nord?
I so move.
Second.
Mr. Nord?
Thank you. General fund on the PDF page 11, which would be page one of the expenses, there's Heartland Parking, which it says deck loss for May. My understanding this is the parking management deck loss fees for money that we don't receive to cover all their costs. Is that accurate? So, the reason I bring this up is because, let me just tell you how much we've spent January through today, or through May. January, we lost $10,000, February $25,000, March $9,000, April $3,000, May $8,000. We're five months into this calendar year.
Mr. Nord, I'm going to ask you to stick to the issue of the bill that you're questioning.
Okay, I'm getting to it. So, so far we've spent $56,000 halfway through the year. I know we've spoken before.
Mr. Nord, I'm asking you to stick to the issue that you brought up. That's Heartland Parking.
This is, okay? And I would like us at some point to consider if this is better for us just to remove the parking fee and forego this expense altogether because we may be saving taxpayers, well, we may be losing less money by doing that. And that was just what I wanted to point out. Thank you.
Any other issues on the bills?
No.
Thank you. Please call the roll.
Mr. Nord?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Aye.
Mayor Kuss?
Aye.
The item is approved. Item C is a resolution authorizing the execution of an agreement for technical planning services with McLean County Regional Planning Commission. Mr. Nord?
I so move.
Second.
Mr. Nord?
The reason I pulled this was because of a question that I had brought up to Ms. Reese here, I think it was last week, possibly the week before, about a conflict of interest, something that I believe is a potential conflict of interest. Regional planning, they're paying for a Vision Zero program. The consultant that is working on that is also a voting member of the governing board of the public transit system. And when she spoke with myself and another council member at a meeting, you know, I asked, I said, is there a significant portion of us dealing with the public transit system? And there is. So, for this, like I say, not everybody may agree with me, but until this conflict, what I believe is a potential conflict of interest is resolved, you know, I'm just not comfortable putting money towards something that I know that there's this conflict. So, thank you.
Mr. Day, would you care to address that?
In terms of whether that's a conflict of interest, there's generally two types of conflicts of interest under Illinois law. There's the statutory conflict of interest, which is a prohibited interest in contracts. That's found under the Public Officers Prohibited Activities Act and under Section 3.1-55-10 of the Illinois Municipal Code. In that case, a public official is prohibited from having any direct or indirect interest in a contract that they may be called upon to vote. In this case, there doesn't appear to be any conflict of interest in that matter because there is no contract at all between Connect Transit having anything to do with the activities which Ms. Heil was engaged in. There's no expenditures coming from Connect Transit involving that, and there's no contract, there's nothing that she'll be called upon to vote regarding that particular program.
Mr. Day, I'm going to ask you to lean into your mic a little bit.
The second type of conflict of interest is known as a common law. That's just conflicts that courts have decided outside of the statute. Most of those, again, are very similar. It's a public official using their position to personally gain, and again, this is a situation where Connect Transit is, again, not having any, they're not spending any money, they're not taking any votes, there's nothing that the Connect Transit Board's going to do, at least with my understanding, and as it's been explained to me so far, that they're going to do with this program, so there shouldn't be any conflict of interest there. So unless there are additional details that somebody wants to share with the town, there doesn't appear to be any type of improper conflict of interest on Ms. Heil's part with respect to her seat on the Connect Transit Board.
Mayor, if I could jump in as well. The item at hand is the execution of an agreement with McLean County Regional Planning for planning services. One component of that relationship is what Mr. Nord is referencing, and that's the Vision Zero, which is now referred to as the Go Safe Campaign, and it's basically a campaign and initiative with various stakeholders to enhance transportation safety for all in the community. So, the Heil Group and Ms. Heil's role in the Go Safe Initiative was to facilitate that planning process and that planning tool, and I believe it's going to be a tool that are used by, that will be used by a variety of stakeholders in terms of improving transportation throughout Bloomington Normal and McLean County. I just want to add that I have had conversations with Mr. Lai and asked him to present to you, the Normal Town Council, possibly in late July, at your second meeting in July, potentially August, depending on his availability, but take some time to explain to you what the Go Safe Campaign is and what the outcome is of that initiative. So I just wanted to explain what it is we're referencing, and then I believe Mr. Day has addressed the concerns about a potential conflict of interest.
Thank you. Mr. Nord, further?
Sure. I just want to be clear that my comments had nothing to do with the merits of what the regional planning is doing for the project. Just when Ms. Heil was talking with us at a Connect Transit/Lot meeting, it seemed like, she did mention that Connect Transit, McLean County Regional Planning, and the town of Normal were all coalition members into this, is what I believe the phrase, so, thank you.
And I understand and appreciate that. I just thought for the rest of the audience, it might be worthwhile to explain what we were referencing when we say the Go Safe Campaign, which is just a component and an initiative of McLean County Regional Planning and the services they provide to us through our services agreement.
Further on this item, please call the roll.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Aye.
Mr. Nord?
No.
Mayor Kuss?
Aye.
Resolution is approved. Item D is a resolution to accept bids and award a contract to J.G. Stewart Contractors Incorporated for the Landmark Drive Sidewalk, West Sidewalk Construction Project in the amount of $320,295. Mr. Nord?
I so move.
Second.
Whenever this came up on our budget discussion, I had brought up that a business had contacted me about that sidewalk, and they had concerns about snow removal, who was going to take care of scooping the snow, landscape issues, because they just put up new signs, and are they going to be liable for slips and falls out there because they don't have sidewalks now? And they were wondering who made this decision during that conversation. It came up that it was Connect Transit that was pushing for this, and there's the bus stop by Kroger, which is the very far north end. That is, or the very south end, thank you. That is, you know, one that does need to get fixed because it's out in the middle of gravel, but we're doing much, much more. What type of conversation occurred with the business owners along there that are going to be negatively impacted by this or positively impacted by this?
Well, I'm going to start by saying that we've been planning for quite some time to install this sidewalk on the west side of Landmark Drive because there is no existing sidewalk and because council has made ADA accessibility and access to bus stops a top priority. So that has been something that's been in the works for quite some time. I can ask a city engineer to come forward and explain the communication we've had with property owners. However, I just want to point out that adjacent property owners liability or non-liability associated with trips and falls and snow removal would be no different here than anywhere else in town. So if their liability or concern about liability is a driving factor in whether or not we would install sidewalks, then we would have sidewalks nowhere because everybody would be concerned about that. Generally, trips and falls and liability issues, people look to the municipality because we tend to have deeper pockets and we certainly do our best to maintain sidewalks and prevent them from being trip hazards, but occasionally that happens. So, I'm not sure how to address a neighboring property owner's concerns about liability in regard. Does council want to hear more detail about communication with property owners or prioritization of why we're moving forward with this project?
I would request to hear the conversations because that was the complaint that was brought up to me, is why weren't they included? And I brought this up back at the budget session, so now I'm looking to see if that conversation happened. Because I was told later was the time to ask, and this is now later.
All right, I'll ask Mr. Otto. Oh, there he is. I'm sorry, I didn't see him in the audience, but there he is.
Thank you, Ms. Reese. We've had conversations with every property owner that's impacted on the project. My staff has met with the owners. As far, to the best of my knowledge, they've addressed any concerns that they have. There was concerns about driveways, how it would be impacted. There are several businesses that have two driveways, and that's an easy staging problem to solve, and we've addressed that in our plans and specifications. There's one property that only has one driveway, and we've also addressed that for access with the property owner as well as in the specifications to help maintain access to that business. So, to the best of my knowledge, we've addressed any concerns that are out there. That's not to say there won't be things that come up during construction. I'm sure there will be, but we will do our best to address them as they come up.
Okay, thank you, because I didn't know that you had talked with them yet, so I'm glad you did because I'm not really opposed to the project, it's just the communication was the complaint that I had. So, thank you for reaching out to them.
Ms. Smith?
I'd just like to remind council members that the working group had an extended discussion about the desirability of not only having ADA accessible bus stops, but the ability for anyone with mobility issues to transport themselves once they're dropped off at the bus stop. On this northern side of Landmark Drive, you have a grocery store, you have several doctors' offices, and there is an apartment building, and the bus stop is not door-to-door, so it is necessary to have sidewalks that connect from the bus stop to anywhere that someone wishes to navigate to. And that is one of the reasons why this project is expensive, and it is a desire to provide more mobility to anyone with a disability so that they do not have to pick and choose their routes by when they can get on and limit themselves to getting off at specific locations. And it is my understanding that Connect Transit is in the loop of communication in order to ensure that, when they have the budget dollars for it, to put a stop shelter there that would accommodate people, because I know there are a number of sore individuals that are employed by Kroger and regularly have to rely on mobility to get to their jobs. regularly have to rely on mobility to get to their jobs.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. Great to see this project moving forward. I think it's a really good story. In some previous council comm conversations about Connect Transit and where we are on bus stops and ADA compliance, there was substantial conversation criticizing the status of our bus stops and that we needed to do more investment in them, and we needed to, as a council, need to prioritize sidewalk improvements to help out. And during one of those conversations, this project was mentioned, and then this project was mentioned at another meeting between us. So this is the third conversation we're having about this. It's good to see it's off the ground and that we're investing in it and that we're improving the bus stops as we promised we would and ask the public to be patient around. So I, for one, am very excited to see this project moving forward. Thanks for all that communication that you're doing. You guys shouldn't expect anything less. You always do a really great job when you do a project like that. So thanks for that work. Appreciate it.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Aye.
Mr. Nord?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Kuss?
Aye. The resolution is approved. Item F is a resolution to accept a proposal with Crawford, Murphy, and Tillie engineers for a hydraulic model of the water distribution system at a total cost not to exceed $115,000 and approve an associated budget adjustment.
Mr. Nord?
I so move.
Second?
Mr. Nord?
When I was reading this, something caught my eye was that we don't know the age of our water system. So I understand this is going to help us more accurately find out what that is. And the water system that we're doing right now at Grove and Ruston is 75 years old, so I'm interested for everyone to see what the inside of that looks like, because when we get these results back, we could easily take the logical leap that systems that are that old within our community probably look the same way and will need maintenance or replacement in a similar timeframe. So that I wanted to point out, because I think that's important, that we have that information. I'm just surprised that we didn't already. But the other reason that I pulled this is, this was bad to four other companies, and we don't have any bid dollars. We don't have anything that says that they were capable. But we decided to go with the recommended vendor, because they've got experience in dealing with the town and familiar with the system. Well, this is another example of the council not receiving all the bids. We're only told what staff gives us. We just got this information late last week. So we don't have any other information to make a different decision on or to know anything more or less. And again, this is again, so I don't support things coming to us where we don't have full disclosure. So in the future, please provide the other bid estimates, because we don't know if the other bids would have saved taxpayers money or not. Thank you.
Ms. Smith?
In my follow-up on this agenda item, it's my understanding, and we're talking about the resolution to accept the Crawford, Murphy, and Tillie engineering hydraulic model, correct?
Correct.
That this is an effort to provide a working model of our water system that can be then tested for pressure points and identify potential issues before they become a problem in our main water system, and that this is an effort to replicate what is being achieved with the camera system in our sewer system. Is that an accurate reflection of what we're doing here?
For the water system, yes.
Okay. And that the process used is more appropriate for the water system. A camera system is not a workable approach to do this proactive evaluation of our system. And could you share with us the process used in determining whether or not to work with Crawford, Murphy, and Tillis and who had this capability?
Sure. I'll ask Water Director John Burkhart to come forward and get into detail. I did want to clarify, this was a proposal process, not a formal bid process. So it's not, the decision and recommendation is not based solely on price. It's based on experience and other, and other factors that we considered when we issued the proposal, in terms of what the successful vendor needed to have in order for us to feel confident in their ability to perform the service. Mr. Burkhart, can you explain the criteria?
Yes, thanks, Ms. Reese. As you stated, we asked for a statement of qualifications. We did not ask for anybody's price. We felt that having the right engineer to do this, someone who's qualified, someone who has the right experience, the right knowledge, was the better approach for someone who could just do it the cheapest. So we asked for history of the company, who their team makeup would be, kind of background of each of those team members, work history of communities similar size, similar scopes. We created a scoring matrix then, and six water department employees scored the four proposals that we received. And it was a unanimous decision that CMT had the best experience, the most experience. They would provide the best end result to the town. So once they were selected, then we asked them for the scope of work that they provided.
And if I can clarify, that is the process under the Public Works Professional Services Selection Act. When you're doing proposals for professional services, such as engineers, surveyors, architects, the state statute actually says you're not allowed to make your decisions based on price. It has to be a competitive process based on qualifications. So this is the process set out in the statute for selecting professional services firms.
Mr. McCarthy?
I think they covered it.
Ms. Lorenz?
All right. Mr. Burkhart, as long as you're still here, I'll ask you a question, and then I've got a follow-up on another item. To do this plan, was this something that even, you know, how is it that you came to want to do this? I guess maybe a simple way of saying is why?
We've been kicking around the idea since I took over the water department on an interim basis in 2016 and then full-time in 2017. Again, to use it as a tool. It's not going to be a crystal ball that tells us, you have a problem here, you have a problem there. We can use information received from this and pair that with stuff that we know, areas that we may see some discoloration in when we flush, areas that residents may have issues or concerns. Again, it's just another tool that we can pull out of that toolbox of ours to help plan for capital projects.
Okay, very good. So you did hit on something there that ties me back to my next statement, and that is that it's a tool that will help us do better in terms of quality, knowing where quality might be degrading. You gave the example of maybe discoloration when you're flushing hydrants. I think that's a good example. So to my statement, then, that I want clarified, to clarify, is that Mr. Nord said that, at his first comments, that we don't know the age of the system.
Ms. Lorenz?
Yeah.
Get a little tighter on the mic.
Yeah, I better start looking this way. That the actual report says the model will provide more accurate estimates on the age of water found within the system. That doesn't suggest that we don't know that, but that this will provide us more accurate estimate. Is that a true statement?
That is correct. And that's the water inside the pipes, not of the age of the pipe itself.
Okay, very good. Just wanted to clarify that it's not that we don't know that now, we're going to have a better estimate. Okay, very good. Thank you.
Mr. Nord?
Sure, thank you, because I did read that as we were figuring out what the age of the pipes were. So thank you for that clarification. So this isn't something that we're being asked to waive the purchasing policy, which says over $25,000. Just in the future, if we don't, if we don't have to follow the purchasing policy, if that could just be included, then there's no question that it doesn't have to be bid out for the reasons like Mr. Day said.
I think Mr. Day covered it quite accurately. And as it is over $25,000, it's come to us for a vote?
Well, for the vote, I understand, but for the being bid out, because our purchasing policy says over $25,000, it needs to be bid.
I think Mr. Day...
Well, there's a couple of things that, I'm sorry to jump in. There are a couple of things that are being confused here. That we, what we're asking for in terms of approve and associated budget adjustment is budget-related, not procurement-related. The budget, we budgeted $95,000. We believe now that this service is going to cost $115, no more, a maximum of $115. So we're asking council to allow us to exceed the $95,000 that's budgeted. That's why we're asking for the associated budget adjustment. Again, that's not linked to the procurement process. And then the reference to resolution to accept a proposal with Crawford, Murphy, and Tillie, that is in compliance with our procurement process. We do have that opportunity to do that. So I just wanted to explain that I'm not, I'm not sure I can do what you're asking, because those two things are unrelated.
Further on the item, Mr. McCarthy?
I just wanted to remind everybody that clearly in the packet materials, it talks about a request for qualification into separate sentences. And just that, as we all read through the packet, is those are the things that helped clue us in, that bid wasn't mentioned in this packet, but RFQ was, to clue us in that there's a difference in our procurement process. And it's, one of the things we learned as council members over the years is that those individual terms matter when staff puts that in our process. So just a helpful hint as you're reading through the packet. Thank you.
Please call the roll.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Aye.
Mr. Nord?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mayor Kuss?
Aye. The resolution is approved. Item G is a resolution amending the base salary of the municipal manager.
Mr. Nord?
I so move.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Nord.
I would like to make a motion that along with this vote, we release the minutes from our executive session, because by the end of this vote, they'll no longer need to be kept out of the public eye.
I'm not sure what you're asking.
That I would like the executive minutes from our discussion in the executive meeting for this matter to be released along with this vote, because there's no reason to keep it out of the public view at that point. The decision had happened.
I can respond, Mayor, if that's all right. The minutes aren't prepared yet, so we don't have them able to be released. And at your next meeting, there will be your regular review of executive session minutes and releasing minutes that you choose to release. So that will happen at your first meeting in July.
So will these be approved to be released through this vote? That's the motion that I'm making, is for it to be approved to be released.
They won't be, Mr. Nord.
Is there a second for this? Because if there's nothing to hide, why not?
I think Ms. Reese was quite clear.
May, Mr. Mayor, I believe that vote would be out of order, because it would be a violation under the Open Meetings Act, because that type of final action was not on our agenda as a final action under this agenda item. So it'll have to wait until it comes up under the agenda item at the next council meeting with the other closed session minutes.
Thank you.
Okay, I don't quite follow that logic, because we voted to raise taxes before when that was not on the agenda. And anyway, that was the motion that I wanted to bring forward. Thank you.
Further on this item, please call the roll.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Aye.
Mr. Nord?
No.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mayor Kuss?
Aye. Motion is approved. Item I is an ordinance authorizing the city manager to adopt rules for outdoor seating and service.
Mr. Nord?
I so move.
Second?
Thank you, Mr. Nord.
The reason I pulled this was because before COVID, there was a parklet program, which allowed folks to use public space for putting tables and whatnot. This is going to extend that, and it benefits mainly restaurant and food establishment places. We've got businesses that rely on parking, that have complained that there's not parking. So this is negatively going to impact them. Were they included in the conversation to extend this?
It's my understanding that they were, Mr. Nord.
I'd like to hear from staff if they were, if they were not.
Ms. Davison, if you're in the audience, I'll bring it forward. We have had numerous conversations through Uptown Partners and with Uptown Businesses, and I believe there's strong support for continuing the outdoor dining in the Uptown area. As I've shared with council in the past, the parklet ordinance that council adopted, and it was in effect in 2019 as a pilot, that will still exist for 2020 and beyond. Ms. Davison, can you give us a summary on the conversations you've had?
Certainly, we have spoken a few times. It's been a few weeks since we last spoke, but I believe Ms. Reese's characterization is accurate. We've had pretty overwhelming support from the Uptown Businesses, based on the unique circumstances of being in a pandemic. So, and that's why we would need to continue talking about anything going forward into the next calendar year. But as far as I understood from all the conversations that I've had with business owners, this, what we're doing right now, would just continue through to holiday season at least, or the end of the calendar year of 2021.
And was this something that the non-food-related business owners were supportive of as well?
For the most part, yes. There were several that were in those meetings that we had. I mean, it's not completely unanimous, but it was really close, from people who spoke with me.
Did the town reach out to them, or was it just you had to show up at a particular meeting?
No, we had a list of Uptown Business owners, and it was all over Zoom. And it was really good attendance for being online.
Okay, and they were made aware of this particular ordinance that, or this particular ordinance that we're authorizing tonight?
I mean, I haven't been in touch with people in the last two weeks or whatever, since we've been talking about this for months. Like, just the idea of the season of 2021 would look pretty much exactly like the season of 2020.
Okay, in the future, when we know that there's something coming up, because like I said, the council just learned about this, you know, recently, and, you know, the public would have just learned as well. And I'm not necessarily opposed to it. It's just communication is what I hear from our constituents. They want to know what's going on. They don't want to be surprised, especially if they're going to be negatively impacted. And parking is a big issue, and this is impacting...
I think the surprise, I'm sorry, I was going to say, I think the surprise would be if we told them that we're removing everything. Because that would have been the surprise, because they've moved forward this summer under the assumption that the tables are going to be where they are currently at. And if, I think they would have been surprised if we had said, the governor's order has expired, so we're taking everything away. And I think that would have had a very different reaction from most. I think they're counting on status quo for this year.
That's correct. And the current system that we did, I mean, we're only doing this because of the effect of the governor's orders going to expire. The current system, the current program we have set up right now is scheduled to go through November already. So the expectation was that this program would go through November, because when it was established, we didn't know when COVID would end. So this is just a technicality of the governor's orders are expiring. So we need to make sure we're changing the line of authority for this.
And this will then end in November? Is that right?
I think we wrote it up as calendar year, just in case there happens to be some nice days in December. In case somebody wants to sit outside.
Mr. Nord, I'm going to... Mr. Nord, I'm going to caution you to not direct staff to undertake actions unless you have the support of your council. You're one member of this council, and this can play out, there was going to be more talk on this, but please don't direct staff to do something at your personal request, but more as the council request.
Okay.
Mr. McCarthy?
Thanks, Mayor. As usual, great job reaching out and talking to all the businesses. I know that's a common practice for you and Mr. Tremblin. I really appreciate you always doing that. I was personally contacted by two restaurants about this directly, and asking me to support and, and help continue this process. They didn't realize it was already going to happen. But, and so proactively, since we got this packet, I reached out to three non-food businesses, I'll call them. And, and all three were supportive. So the little bit of homework that I've done since the packet came out was to talk to five separate businesses in, in Uptown, and all were very, very supportive of it, and thought that it only helped businesses, or only helped bring more business into Uptown in a time when some people are still a little sketchy about going out into public and getting in mass gatherings. So it's, as best I can tell, it's been pretty universally accepted and appreciated.
As we go forward, the one question I had about what I read was, after this, we're talking about a code change? Is that what we're thinking about?
Potentially. This gives us an opportunity to explore what, what portions of the zoning code, if any, need to be amended to allow businesses outside of the Uptown area to take advantage of outdoor dining if they desire. In some instances, current outdoor dining outside of the Uptown area is located in required parking. So we would have to make some modifications for the long term if we want to continue this. So this, this allows staff, you know, fall and winter, to assess what modifications need to be made, what are businesses looking for, and then come back to council, put something like that through the process, a public process.
Thanks for that extra detail, because I did get one question on that actual item. So I appreciate that, that foresight.
Ms. Lorenz?
Yeah, thank you. I just want to raise up the issue for a city manager to consider as you're looking at this extending through the rest of the year, and that is the relevance and practicality of the continued 10-minute parking along Beaufort. I think, as I recall, that was put into place to help with, like, the door dashes and things that, like that, that were very prominent this time last year. And if that's not the case, then maybe that can swing back to an hour, or whatever it used to be. I was found in a 10-minute spot for an hour and paid my dues accordingly. So just a little personal thought there. Anyway, and the other point I was going to make is that I just hear overwhelming support for this. And so I hope going forward that we do modify the code and, and find something that is truly agreeable. Having spent a lot of time out there on picnic tables, it's just overwhelming joy that people have, and particularly taking in the Wednesday and Saturday music acts on the circle, I think if we were to take the picnic tables away, there would be perhaps mutiny. So I think it's very good to keep it.
Mr. Preston, and then Ms. Smith.
Thanks, Mayor. I would first echo some of the positive comments that have been said by others. I've been hearing a lot of positives about the outdoor dining that we've had the last year. I know it's something that not every business benefits from, or some benefit more than others, but overall, as a general, I think it's something that people like, people utilize. And the fact that we are keeping that in some form or fashion, at least through the end of this year, I think is a real positive. A question for staff, can you get into the detail a little more about the impact that this will have on our parklets program? I'm trying to think of, you know, if there would be a scenario where a certain business would be interested in and apply for a parklet specifically for their business, and how that space-wise could conflict with some of the outdoor dining that can be used by multiple and is already existing in a different setup? Can you talk about the relationship between those two programs?
Before, before you do, my, just for clarification on that question, I think what you're asking is that if somebody puts a parklet in, or wants to put a parklet in, but the space has been identified as the other type of space, public dining space, who has the superior position? Is that what you're asking?
I mean, that's part of it, yeah. I think another part is, are we going to lose even more parking to a mix of what's currently there with outdoor dining, and then other that's parklet, and it kind of got two different situations going on? And how do they intersect?
I'll defer to Ms. Davidson, but I will say that we don't anticipate anyone putting in a parklet at this point of the year. We don't believe anybody's going to apply to put in their own seating area, not when we're providing it on both, both sides of the street and all the blocks. So there shouldn't be a time, a time in the future where there'll be our provided seating on street and a parklet, a private parklet installation. But I'll let Ms. Davidson talk that through in terms of how the parklets fit in.
Yeah, I mean, we really don't know yet, because, as you can picture, the only parklet that we've ever had was the one in front of Stave. And, you know, that takes a bit to assemble, put it out there. It was quite an investment, right? So I've heard, so had there not been a pandemic, I'm sure they would have put that out again. There were a couple of other businesses that were preparing to also build a parklet, although there had been questions, like, well, could they maybe be bigger? And, you know, because this was a new program, it was a pilot, you know, we're still in flux. So the, all those questions are on the table. And so, like, I guess, you know, could Stave put a parklet in the place where they had it prior to the pandemic, and then somehow there's still the public seating just to the west of it? Like, I don't, I don't know, because the way these things are built, they don't necessarily merge very well into extended spaces. But it's really going to depend on what the businesses talk about, the options that are out there, who's interested. But we definitely don't know right now if it'll be like a mix-and-match scenario. I, we just don't know yet. But definitely something to be talked about. Because I think the primary concern is, how much room is it taking up?
The other thing that we'll be looking at, though, is rather than public tables and public-provided space in, in parking spaces, although we did build the ramps, and I think those could be useful moving forward, maybe there's an opportunity for us to put additional seating somewhere in Uptown. So people can grab their food and go sit somewhere, or just enjoy some outdoor seating.
And I'd add to Ms. Reese's, Ms. Reese's comment that no one's likely to be building a parklet this year, if you just take a look at the price of building materials. I think that kind of reinforces that action. Ms. Smith?
I just wanted to share that I believe that the, the outdoor seating addresses a need of some people who still are not comfortable being indoors. An article in The Panograph on Sunday was referencing a large Catholic congregation that finds 70% of their congregations sitting without social distancing and without masks, but 30% are still congregating on the other side of the sanctuary, where they do get to maintain distance and mask. And I noticed that when we went out on Saturday, and there was outdoor seating, and, and the people sitting outdoors were, several of them were wearing masks. So in addition to, to that rationale for its popularity, there were three letters in my inbox today from people endorsing this, finding that it, it is a delightful addition to the ambiance of our, our street life.
Thank you. Further on this item? Please call the roll.
Mr. Nord?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Aye.
Mayor Kuss?
Aye. The ordinance is approved. That concludes our omnibus agenda. We have one item of general orders, and that's a resolution approving the second amended preliminary subdivision plan for Blackstone Trail subdivision.
We have approval.
Thank you. Is there discussion on this item? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Aye.
Mr. Nord?
Aye.
Mayor Kuss?
Aye. The resolution is approved. We do have one order of new business, and that's a motion to adjourn to an executive session. But before we do so, we do have a public comment post-meeting, and we will take council concerns before we go into an executive session. So our first speaker is Jennifer Perz, I think I got that right? Just as a reminder, please state your name for the record, and you have three minutes for comment.
Good evening. My name is Jennifer Perz. I have lived in Normal with my husband and four children for the last 15 years. I opened a ballet school, uptown dance, in Uptown Normal nine years ago. I have watched Uptown Normal transform from a couple of quaint blocks into the grand-family-centric center of town it is today. I have been so proud to work, eat, and shop, and bring more business to Uptown. Uptown Normal businesses suffered through the pandemic, and some did not return. And about three to four weeks ago, the Indy Smoke Shop moved into the building next to me at 112 West North Street. My clients and I were shocked, as it is a far cry from the boutique shops and eating establishments that line this street. My business brings a lot of family foot traffic to Uptown Normal during the week, and people love catching up with friends in the circle, having a bite to eat, or shopping for a gift while they wait for their dancer. I am usually one of the last businesses open on weeknights as we wrap up advanced ballet at 9:00 PM. The Indy Smoke Shop is open until 10:00, and my clients and I are concerned about who will be loitering in the front of the smoke shop. My clients and I are disappointed that, after all the investing into the formation of this favorite spot, that there hasn't already been zoning ordinances in place for this type of thing. After discovering that Uptown Businesses are at the discretion of the building owner only, I began a petition for change. I am currently in a contract to purchase my building at 114 West North Street, and now I'm worried about its potential rental values with the smoke shop next door. I am here to ask you to consider what can be done to tighten ordinances that would allow different businesses to coexist without being detrimental to each other, or to the value and the environment of the Uptown Business District. The town has invested a lot of taxpayer dollars into the formation of this charming place that it is today. I, as well as many of my neighboring businesses, clients, and fellow residents, want you to seriously consider how we can maintain that. And I have my petition and its comments.
Do you, the clerk, do you want to take your petition?
Thanks.
Thank you.
And our last commenter is David Blumenthal.
Mayor and council, it's an honor to be here tonight to talk to you. Obviously, I feel that we have a vested interest in each other. I know each one of you personally, and have for many years. I want to tell you about my friend, Stan Nord. He's probably one of the most challenging, obnoxious, pushy people I've ever met. But I've learned more from Stan Nord in the past year than I've learned from many people that are involved in public service. See, Stan takes it personally to represent people. And being here, he's pushing back, and that's what the people want. That's what I've learned over the past three and a half years, walking doors. I think I kind of gathered about 5,000 doors. I know Mr. Preston, I know Mr. McCarthy, I know you know about that, Mayor. I know you know about that, Kathleen. I know Ms. Cummings would know about that if she was here. Mr. Nord knows about that. These people talk to us. They want representative government. That's what we are. We're representative democracy. We're a constitutional republic. What transpired last week did not need to happen. It was uncalled for, and we covered it on my radio station yesterday. And we're going to continue to highlight things like that, because this is glaring. We are one of the last holdouts of organized civil government. It's not happening in Springfield, it sure isn't happening in Washington, DC. I don't want it to seep into this community. Like I said, I appreciate everything you've done. I told Kevin that during many forums. We might not always agree. But we also don't have to have this cantankerous, belittling, personal inventory-taking. We're not here to do that. I wouldn't do that to you, Mayor. I wouldn't do it to Kevin, Scott, Kathleen, Kimberly, Stan. I think it's unprofessional. Let's not let it happen again. Thank you.
Before taking that motion for executive session, are there comments or concerns?
Mayor?
Oh, yes.
Is that right?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. Just two things I wanted to mention, so thank you for allowing me to go first. The one thing I wanted to respond to, I should have said this when we were talking about item C, the Regional Planning Commission, just in, in response to a comment you made, Mr. Nord, you referenced Connect Transit Board meetings that some of the board representatives were having with council members as lobbying. I simply, and I should have said something at the time, I just wanted to point out that, you know, a while back, kind of, our history in, in recent years has been council indicating that you feel, as a, as a group, like, more information about Connect Transit was important to you. So just, I think it's appropriate to point out that the appointees that this body has placed on the Connect Transit Board has taken it upon themselves to share information with council members, feeling like that was a good dialogue, and not necessarily lobbying, but trying to answer your questions and bring you up to speed on what Connect Transit Board members are doing and facing, and, and what is happening with Connect Transit. So I just wanted to point that out. The, the other thing, in terms of my concerns, so to speak, I, I wanted to share, is our Public Works Director, Wayne Aldrich, has decided that retirement is looking pretty good. And he has determined that he's going to be leaving us and using up a little bit of his vacation time, and then retiring in August. So that means that tonight is his last council meeting. And so I just wanted to take a moment and publicly express, just on my behalf, appreciation for all Wayne has done. I don't even know, we could be here for hours to talk about the impact he has had on this organization. He joined the town in the mid-'90s, '96 or '97, I think, '97, and came to us as the town engineer at the time, and in the early 2000s, was convinced to take on the role of Uptown Development Director. And you all know the story then. Wayne led what probably has been the most impactful and remarkable project, municipal project in, you know, probably much of Illinois, but certainly for the town of Normal, by leading the Uptown redevelopment. We are sitting here today in a room that, that came to be because of Uptown redevelopment. And so Wayne's legacy in our organization and our community is, is probably indescribable. And since Wayne was ramping up in the direct role of Uptown Development Director, then he moved over a few years back and became a Public Works Director. So he's had a number of hats. Each of his hats, he's, he's done a remarkable job, he's done more than we could ever have expected, and certainly probably ever should have asked of him. But I can't thank Wayne enough for all of his support and all of his impact on the community, but most of all, this organization. So thank you to Wayne for being such an integral part of our leadership team. Thanks, Wayne.
It's been my great pleasure to be in Uptown. It's always been, been fun, exciting, and, you know, we've got a great team. Can't do it without a great team and all the employees here. Super team. Always been exciting, and I have to thank the three city managers, and that's why
to thank the three city managers, and that's quite rare at the town of Normal. So thank you to one of the city managers, certainly for their leadership and, you know, giving the challenge, you know, and supporting us. And then certainly the council, the council and the mayors councils for all their support, vision, and really providing the ability to complete some of the projects.
We will publicly recognize Wayne in a celebration. That date has not yet been determined, but it will probably be sometime in late July, so.
Ms. Reese, would you prepare an ordinance for the next meeting denying Mr. Aldrich's retirement? And we'll put a revisit on that in two years. Mr. McCarthy?
Yeah, real briefly, as this is our last meeting before the Fourth of July, I have gotten a couple of questions recently about fireworks. So the town of Normal is in fact having a fireworks celebration, as is the City of Bloomington at Fairview Park on the Fourth of July. I have no idea what time that starts, but we do have one. And also questions, the annual Fourth of July Five Mile Run is happening on the Fourth of July at 7:30. This year, all at Fairview Park in Normal, Illinois. So that's it.
And what's the name of that run?
The Park to Park.
Thank you.
Five-miler. Thank you.
Any other comments? A motion to adjourn to executive session for the purpose of discussing pending litigation.
And I seconded.
Please call a roll.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Aye.
Mr. Nord?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Kuss?
Aye. We are adjourned to executive session. Thank you.
Thanks for giving me a couple minutes.
Oh, yeah. I forgot.